All rise, please.
Okay.
Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug? Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Joe?
Here.
And Al?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Public Meeting's Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has closed notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the daytime in place thereof sent to the record, Ridgewood News and the town news newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting the school districts' principals offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, chapter 226 six, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100.
So, Al?
Okay.
Al, before we do that, it just, it looks like two of our student reps, Joshua and Noel, are also in attendance remotely.
Okay.
As far as attendance.
Okay, very good. I'll read the mission statement. The mission statement, the mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. We now have an opportunity for the public comments on agenda items only. There will be time for the public comments at the end of this meeting for any items outside of the agenda. So if anyone has any questions on agenda items, this should be a quick meeting, so you will have an opportunity later to speak, as I mentioned. Nothing more, okay? Let's get into student member reports. I guess Noel or Josh, if you have anything for us tonight?
I'll go first.
Yep.
So I just think it's, like, I have a bunch of friends on the yearbook, so, and this year is posing like a lot of challenges for them, so I think it'd be interesting to update you guys on that. So, because like they don't have a lot of the normal things like club photos or like activities done in school, they've emailed us a lot of, a lot more, and they say like, for example, during winter break, like, you have an interesting holiday tradition, or they just emailed us and talked about like masks. And another thing that they're trying to do is, like, I know for the SGO, we had a screenshot or team screening to try and like incorporate that into the yearbook. So I think there's like interesting ways they're trying to get around like the COVID challenges. I hope that was cool.
Very good. Noel, do you have anything?
Um, I don't really have anything today. I think everyone's just excited to get back to school from break.
Okay.
And just for the record, Jesse Henderson III, student rep, contacted me that he'd be unable to be here tonight.
President's report, I really didn't put anything together because I didn't know that I would be sitting in this seat, so I'll just kick it off to superintendent's report.
So thank you very much. My report is also very short this evening. First off, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Welcome back to the in-person instruction, albeit what it is that began yesterday. We continue to see a shift of students from the hybrid in-person to a virtual model. That's continuing. It is freeing up some opportunities for us, though, to look at bringing some additional students back or offering them opportunity to attend more regularly, particularly our special education students. An email went to the middle school population today. It'll be going to the high school later this week. If we're successful, we'll be able to get some of our special ed students back in four days a week at least, beginning on Monday at the middle school and then shortly thereafter at the high school. So that's our, our plan of action. We continue to look at the schedule. The basic issue that we are focusing on is to see if we have the ability to eliminate the all-virtual day on Wednesday and have five days of in-person instruction coming forward. And that's currently in process that we're doing. One of the complicating factors that we have is that we do share teachers between the buildings. And one of the benefits of the current schedule is that because the periods are clumped, one through four and five through eight, we're able to accommodate those, those schedules easily. So that's one of our complicating issues as we are looking to go forward. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to resolve some of those things for our next meeting, which as we just approved would be January 19th is our next meeting scheduled. And I'd also like to thank and congratulate some of our students from the RDTV program. I don't know if you've been able to view the programs lately, but they produced a whole series of public service announcements regarding COVID and social distancing and wearing masks and appropriate behavior. And they ranged from animated items to other stu-, to students being interviewed. It was very, very enlightening. If you haven't seen all of them on the program yet, I was fortunate enough to get previews of it, so I saw, I saw everything. I thought they did a wonderful job. I hope it resonates and continues to move forward. You know, we, we had a little informal conversation earlier. Currently in New Jersey, the, we have not been contacted regarding educational personnel regarding when they can start looking forward to receiving a vaccine or becoming available to it. However, we, we have been notified a couple of times that that's coming, that the mechanism to do that will be forthcoming. And as soon as we have it, we will, of course, publish it widely for our staff and for the other members who are part of the educational organization. Currently, there's no vaccine for us at this point, but we certainly look forward to that, that happening. I also want to then conclude by thanking everyone who did notify us of any possible exposures or positive tests that took place over break. I very much appreciate that because it gave us the opportunity to plan for students to return, the proper students to return, the proper staff to return. And I just would encourage us to continue with that kind of communication because when we hear from the public, we're able to respond and react appropriately. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I just ask Pat for a clarification? It's Stephanie.
Sure.
Pat, when you say the special education population, because that encompasses a large amount, could you just be more specific as to, so that people who are listening, as to the, the type of the student that will be available for that opportunity?
Well, currently, we've, we've already offered that opportunity to our self-contained students. They've been coming since September. Now we're expanding it to resource rooms and students with IEPs. That's where we're going next.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. I'm going to wheel through the committee. I don't think there was much going on at the end of the year here, but I'll let each committee chairperson speak for themselves. Allen, budget and finance?
Nothing. Your report.
Okay. Doug, facilities and security? Did you say anything?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm sorry. John, community relations and information?
No update for this meeting.
Okay. Stephanie, curriculum?
Nothing.
And Claudia, policy and governance?
No, nothing.
Okay. Just, Tom has, you know, concerning the budget with COVID expenses, are they continuing to rise or are we kind of set with ordering supplies?
We're essentially set at this point. The biggest expenditures were, of course, July through November-ish.
Okay. Very good. Let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Stephanie?
Stephanie is first. Allen will take you as second.
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay. Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia? Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen? Doug? Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. I believe we have one item to take a vote on. Number 11, miscellaneous. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the second reading of the following policies: the 6,000 series, 6171.2 gifted and talented, 6173.1 remote learning, the 9,000 series, 9322 public and executive sessions. Does anybody have any questions or on either of these policies? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
It's Claudia. I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Stephanie, I'll second.
And Al, before we vote, the public, since it is a second reading, has an opportunity to comment.
Right. Do we have any public comments on either of these policies, please? Okay, Tom, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen? Doug? Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, we move right into old business? Slash new business? Anybody have anything?
Al, it's Stephanie. In, in looking at the calendar that we just approved for board meetings, there is a very large gap between February and our first meeting in March. So, you know, depending on things that are happening, we want, wanna, we might want to consider at the next meeting just coming up with a date for people to keep on their calendar in case we need to slot one in.
Okay, sounds fair. I think every year we've done, we've kind of slipped a meeting in somewhere. You said between February 8th and March 15th?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a long time.
Yep.
And the only other thing is, I think we discussed at the last executive, the possibility of coming up with short-term board goals, district goals, something goals that might carry us through the rest of the year.
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe we could slate that for next executive or next public, or however you want to go about that.
No, that's, that's definitely going to be next executive because I met, met with Patrick. He had to sign the, his evaluation, and I did bring up what we discussed about probably getting some short-term goals set first before we establish some long-term district goals. So duly noted, Stephanie. Thank you. Anything else?
Just to that point, I think with goal setting and all too, usually that's done in public, so perhaps that could be in that extra meeting. We're thinking about slotting in, right, usually?
Okay.
Not really an executive matter.
Okay, so between February and March? Right. Does anybody else have anything? Old business, new business?
Winter, sorry, wait. What are we, winter sports now? Yes, winter sports starting. Yeah, it is. Is that better?
Yeah.
With winter sports starting, are, do we have plans or can we have plans to stream the winter sports since there's not going to be any spectators like we did for basketball? And I'm not sure what other sports we did in the, in the spring. Is that?
Right, so just for timing purposes, today, actually, we had, or yesterday, I'm sorry, we had the first hockey practice. The other sports, which include basketball, will begin January 11th. And with Tom's help and the tech department's help, we put in the necessary wiring to be able to livestream from our facilities.
Thank you.
Yep. I did see an email come through from Dennis this morning. It had about four or five attachments. I didn't get a chance to read any of it. Was that covered in there or?
That was a general announcement which went to the public. We had already distributed to the students and to those with, to all students and to those who had signed up for sports. That talked about the winter guidelines for participation, how you have to follow the COVID protocols. It talked about the dates and timing of the different seasons. And it also, as you recall, in this, in the fall, we approved a modification of the application which would allow parents to transport students to the games, and it included that. So it was really informational items to go out to everybody.
Patrick, in that too, I saw, again, just looking based on history, and obviously things are different now, the seasons moving around, is this going to affect any of our students who may participate in, in winter and spring activities? Because I know, yeah, one of the things I did read is you cannot participate in, in two sports at the same time. It seems, so it looks like some of the seasons may overlap. I know they're trying to do that, to keep that to a minimum, but.
So.
That's a Dennis question.
So the, the, the answer is yes, the process of participation will remain in flux. However, it, it, once we get to the point where there's an overlap, according to the detailed schedule, which is not listed in that, for the most part, the overlap would occur if there was extra season play, if we were in playoffs or some type of, of tournament. At the conclusion of the winter season, that's where the overlap would occur.
Okay.
So it would affect very little. And NJSIAA is aware of the fact that there could be some overlap between winter and spring sports and are working to address that. As an example, they might have the students practice in, in only one of the sports, but be able to participate in games in both should that, should that situation occur. But they, they have it on the radar screen.
Gotcha. And one other question, if I could, as far as extracurriculars. I'm assuming at this point now that the Spring Musical, I don't know, too, are they still going to try to do something?
Yep.
You know? Okay.
Yeah, they're still working on it. They're, if you pass by the auditorium, you'll see that they're working on the set as we speak.
Okay, good, good to know.
So we're, we're trying to do that. Again, there will probably be a streaming situation because we do have the severe restrictions on who can be in the room at the same time. So it's unlikely it would be before a live audience, but.
Hopefully, we could do pay-per-view to help them out.
Pay-per-view would be part of it, yeah. But, yeah, they're still moving forward with it.
All right, cool.
Unfortunately, we, you know, we did have, we were trying to, Mr. Wilson and the Coral and band program were trying to have a, a winter concert. They had planned for it outside on December 20th, but then the COVID restrictions became so much more severe about a week or two before that, that, that had to be shut down. And so if you're fortunate enough to follow some of the other emails that come out from, from the band and the Coral program, particularly the Coral program, you'll see students with virtual concerts and tryouts and things of that nature. They're pretty good.
I'm sure the community would welcome a concert at any time, so should they, should they, should they want to try it again when it gets a little better? I had another question because, Tom, we said we were going to mention something every meeting and, you know, I think this one might go by. But maybe at next meeting, Pat, can you give us an idea of the timeline and a proposed job description for this administrator and how that process is going to work? Oh, Tom's doing it? Is Tom doing?
I'm s-, you were asking me that. Yes, I, yeah, we didn't, we have several positions, of course, to fill, one of whom is crucial position at times, and I was waiting for after the holiday to move forward on that.
Speaking about positions to fill, do we have the date for our high school principal to arrive?
January, January 19th.
January 19th, very good.
And there will be a overlap with Mr. Hines for a solid week of in-person, then the following week will be virtual overlap, and then Mr. Hines will be available as needed to help with the crossover.
Very good. Anything else? Old business, new business? Okay, let's open it up to public comments. Just raise your hand or enter it via chat. You are limited to three minutes. We need your name and sound, please.
All righty, we already have a question, and it's from Nicole, Nicole Kim. And the question is, does the board have any updates on the anti-race, on any anti-racist measures they will be taking after the RD for BLM presentation over a month ago? That's from Nicole from River Bridge.
Well, yes, we did. We communicated that to, I did, I communicated that on December 15th to the group that made the presentation, or at least to one of the individuals who made the presentation, as to what our plans are for moving forward. And they're in, they're in process. I also invited that if there were any resources in additions to the ones that were provided to us could be sent forward, and I'd be happy to make sure that they get to the right people.
And Nicole Kim also responds, I would like, I would just like it to be on public record, if that's okay?
Well, it is on public record that I've replied and what we're going to be doing moving forward regarding that. In particular, and as the group knows, we've invited members of our staff who were participating in the same presentation that you did to design and put forward a program for professional development for our staff. And I also indicated that the district would be incorporating the concept of equity into our annual survey, which is going forward on the first two weeks in February.
Any more comments or questions? Please raise your hand or put a comment in the chat. All righty, we have another one. And it's Elaine Dong from Oradell. I have two questions. Number one, what have you changed to ensure we don't have another closure due to the quarant-, close quarters of staff? And two, this morning's increase for middle school IEP holders from seven hours to 14 hours per week is still the bare minimum you can offer. With the attendance plummeting, what else are you considering to allow those who need or want more in-person instruction to get it? Afternoons and Wednesday in-person options for IEP holders? Survey those who are interested in more in-class time with lottery to assign it. What are you considering and when will it happen?
Well, as I indicated, what we're looking at is modifying the schedule to increase, to eliminate the virtual day in Wednesday and to see how we can increase the number of in-person opportunities for all students, first off. But as I indicated, we're moving towards the special ed population right, right now. And we also, on the board, approved a program to see, approved a, I'm sorry, just give me a second, I'll reference it. We just approved as a part of item 12F, a supplemental instruction program so that we could make staff available to our students, those who are in need outside of school hours and moving forward. Unfortunately, with the restrictions that we have, we are very limited in the ability to extend the school day beyond what we have at the particular moment. So it's going to be about increasing frequency and the opportunity for students to attend regularly.
Any more questions? A guest named Ed, when will Wednesdays open up, please?
We, as I indicated, what we're looking to do is we're continuing to work forward on that. And I remain hopeful that I can bring some recommendation to the board at our next board meeting on January 19th.
And a question from Vanessa B. Follow-up on anti-racist agenda. We wanted to follow-up on the survey that is in the plan to be used to determine satisfaction with a DNI culture in the school. You were kind enough to share that the planned survey will come from youth truth. Are there plans to update the version used?
I'm not sure. I don't understand the question. Okay, so I'm, Mrs. Hartman is whispering in my ear. It's not the same survey that we've, we've issued in the past, during the past two years. This is an additional module that goes in, that's going into it, but that's dedicated specifically to this subject area.
Nicole Kim asks, who will be included in modifying the survey?
Again, I don't understand what the issue is with modifying the survey. We, we have a, a survey that, that we're going to be issuing and using. It's going to be done through that process. And it addresses the issue of diversity, equity, et cetera, and it's been used in other schools by, through this administration. So we'll have embarrasses of comparison when we get the data that comes back.
And Vanessa B. asks, will it target the concerns mentioned in the informal survey? I don't know if you answered that, but probably.
Yes.
Any more questions, please? Okay, and a question from Ed is, what have you changed to ensure we don't have another closure due to the close quarters of staff?
Well, that, that was a, a unique situation that involved the guidance office and the main office. And unfortunately, from a configuration point of view, they're, they are in relative close quarters. So if we have a positive in, in that area, unfortunately, it, it had a broader effect than we would have liked to. it, it had a broader effect than we would have liked to. It wasn't a matter of teachers congregating. It wasn't a matter of students congregating. It was more a matter of the layout of the facility and the unfortunate part that somebody got tested positive for COVID.
And we have two questions from Karen Bonnack. The first is, can you provide the specific module name for the, the survey, I believe?
I don't have it in front of me, but sure.
And the second question is regarding goals. Will there be an opportunity for community input regarding the Riverdale for BLM issues?
We, you, there, you are having input now. And whether or not they, it becomes a specific goal or item going forward or part of a goal going forward, we have to let the process play itself out.
And there was just a follow-up, and it says, in terms of the district goals? I don't know if that, yes?
Same answer.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, there's two. One from Nicole Kim. I think Karen also means a specific committee for these issues.
I've already explained how we're moving forward with that process at this time, and we'll see how it plays out.
And the next question is from ED, says Elaine asks, again, what can you do to avoid another closure? I do not blame anyone, but is there, is there not a lesson learned?
Yes, but unfortunately, the nature of this pandemic, the nature of what we're dealing with, it's, it's impossible to prevent. But certainly, everyone is attempting as best we can to, to do that. I, I, I cannot guarantee under any circumstance that there will not be another closure coming forward. There may be. And we certainly have to see how the break that we just went through plays itself out. Certainly have to see how our future breaks play themselves out. And clearly, we're all concerned. Everyone, I think, is concerned when we are watching the news regarding additional strains, how things are moving through the, the, the community. And of course, the issue is how widely dispersed we can get with the vaccine and the other preventative measures that may be coming our way.
And another question from Karen Bonnack. When is the meeting to discuss the goals? And I, I believe that's referring back to the anti-racist agenda.
The, as the board indicated before, they're going to discuss when that will be at our next board meeting. And as two board members suggested, it may be, we may be inserting a different meeting, another meeting into the schedule that we just approved. So I can't give you a specific date.
And a question from Nicole Kim. When is the next curriculum meeting? And has the board discussed any changes to the curriculum regarding diversity and inclusion?
As I've indicated, I've already indicated to you what steps are that we've taken and that we are taking moving forward here. The board just went through reorganization tonight, which means that the old committees, if you will, cease to exist. And then the new committees will be appointed. They should be appointed at our next board meeting and then agendas. I'm sorry, dates will be established for when they go forward. This is an annual period of reorganization that takes place where, where the board, if you will, will set forward its next set of committees, next members of committees, and how it's going to meet and go forward.
Any more questions or comments?
Okay, thank you, Mark. I'm going to make a juror, juror motion to a juror.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight o'clock.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.